Select Board, from Monday, October 7th. The first item on our agenda is to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the Chair so declares, which she does. We will be returning to regular session for 6:30 with the Finance Committee, so there abouts. Would someone like to make the motion to enter into executive session?
I will do that. Can I just say so moved, or you want me to read it?
So moved is fine.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Because it's a session, we need to do roll call vote?
Aye, aye.
Riley, aye.
Minogue, aye.
Geiger, aye.
All right. So we are in executive session now. I assume the FinCom. Do you guys have a quorum? Are you called to order, or are you?
I don't think we have to order.
All right, perfect. We're good to go. So the intent here tonight is to talk through and kind of finalize budget guidance for the Town Manager. We can open it up to whatever. I just handed out some ideas I had, but we can discuss them or ignore them.
I would actually like you to read them so that, like Josh hears it and everybody understands what you've said rather than having to read it.
Okay.
Was that not your plan?
Not given that we have 20 minutes to do this, but... So basically, to me, the budget is our document where we indicate our priorities as a community. We talked about this a little bit as a select board at a recent meeting. I think, and correct me where, or if I'm wrong, that the consensus there was that we're looking for two budgets to be presented, neither one to have any new benefited positions. The first one would be a carry forward of the services and things we have now. I don't know that that would necessarily be balanced in the strictest sense of the word. And then the second that we would be looking for would be one that does come through as balanced, without use of an override. And then that would obviously have to have a list of what changed. I assumed you had kept one.
I don't.
Other things that we can talk about? We're kind of the idea that all the numbers should be presented in writing in advance. And if things deviate, thank you, that should be called out. I think we need to have actuals in there somewhere. I think that once the budget is presented, that that information should be frozen and amendments can happen in the next column. Personally, I think that the reserve transfer line is where the contingency money should be, and that with that perhaps bolstered some, then we would be able to see expenditures more precisely estimated. I think we need to continue to talk about what free cash is used for, so that there's less of an impression that it's kind of found money for specific projects. I think that some grant funding should be included in the revenues, and I think that snow and ice should currently be budgeted as it has in years past, and that the boards and folks can talk about changing that, but that that needs to be really transparently done. I don't know where the FinCom is at, what, anything else?
Well, we met last week to discuss what we thought the budget guidance should be, and we actually came up with a proposal that was... First of all, we all said that there should be no override. That was unanimous. But we also said that this is going to be a difficult year just because of the shortfall that's facing us, based on a large amount of work that was done by both the schools and the municipal finance team to put together a budget that they thought was going to be preliminary, preliminary, be a reasonable approximation of what this year could, 2021 could look like. And they went through, basically, it was basically a flat budget with inflation and merits, and that's about it. And that budget created, preliminary, preliminary created a half million dollar problem. You were there, as a matter of fact. And the FinCom unanimously, this proposal was that there should only be one budget. It should be a no override budget. And the way you get to that override budget is, and it could change depending on what the schools do, but there was a, the shortfall, our proposal was that that shortfall would be split with a regional school, and each take on the challenge of getting the $250,000 back. And it would be via, whatever they deemed was the right way to do that, that didn't do things incorrectly. So as an example, the proposal from the municipal side potentially would be that they would be less conservative on their revenue line, which means to be less free cash potentially at the end of the year because they'd get more aggressive on there, what they say is going to happen for meals, tax, et cetera, et cetera. We didn't go specifically through and say how much the Town Manager should do per line item, because we don't think that's our job. Our job is to say, where do we think, first of all, do you think you can get there? And how much, if you do get there, what's it going to do to the following years as far as, are we putting the town at risk that something might happen where if free cash doesn't happen like it has in the past, what would that mean? In other words, are we going to have no free cash? And therefore, is that going to put the town at jeopardy to fill certain reserves up or just pay, you know, spend capital? We did a cash flow analysis that said, there's probably a minimal risk. That was our opinion. But we saw nothing that would say that, in fact, if we went and said, raise revenue and maybe be less aggressive on spending via the one you mentioned, Allison, on the, you called it revenue, it was on the dispatch. But we weren't going to, we weren't, our proposal was that we were not going to tell the Town Manager how to do it, but we've given suggestions on where to do it, i.e. increase revenue and potentially reduce some spending. But in the end, those two, it doesn't really matter because it's going to fall into free cash. So you want to make sure that if you can get to break even without doing an override, our feeling was 500,000 for just the municipal side is way too large. You just can't get, we felt you can't get there. If, in fact, the school can come up with 250 from their side, which is in their current preliminary, preliminary, we felt that that number plus the 250 from the town, which is aggressive but not out of this world, we felt that you could get to break even, and therefore you wouldn't put, 2020 could be achieved at a break even, 2022 would be the year then that says, what did free cash do at that point in time? It does not affect 2021 or affect 2022. So at that time, that would be that when we would find out whether this being a little more aggressive on spent, on revenue really impacts the town. And if it does, 2022 could be the time you might have to go for something other, maybe an override. The other thing that's going to happen in 2021 is that the school is working on, has their contracts up. In 2022, the town does. And if you look at what the real issue is in the town, we spend more than we bring in revenue. It's got it right now, it's 1%, that's 400K. And if that holds in the future where we're spending more because the run rate in wages and benefits is higher than potentially the revenue line that comes in because of the way the school allocation works, it's not the school, it's the allocation problem. And so we felt that there was an opportunity to bring spending more in line if the contracts could be worked in a manner that was favorable, and maybe they can. But there is time, so that 2021, the school contract, 2022, if those came down, both benefits and wages, to a reasonable, I shouldn't say reasonable, to a different level.
A lower level.
Lower level, then in fact, you may not have a problem going forward, because then you balance revenue expenses out. You can't, under the current contracts, we don't believe you can balance it, it won't work. But if it come down, spending does come down a little bit, and that can't happen this year, by the way, unless you cut positions, and we felt that this was not the year to do that, because we felt that 500,000 shared is not an impossible task on a $40 million budget. It's going to be hard, but it's not impossible. So our recommendation was, split the problem, the 500 problem, let Mark figure out how to get there with being a little more aggressive on revenue, and maybe a little less left spending, let him decide, because again, either, with no added positions, obviously, in that, in that, first of all, you can't add positions anyways when you get this kind of problem, but that's probably a known that you can't do that. Not adding any positions, and we felt that that's how you could get to this. And so our proposal, that was our proposal. Balanced budget, split the difference. Now, he's still got, he's got to still work with the school, and the school will help split the difference. If that doesn't work, then this whole thing won't work. Then you might have another kind of problem, you've got to cut positions and go for an override. But if they share with us the issue through however they're going to do it, then I think this year will work, and next year will be a different year, but it may work again, depending on what happens with the wage and benefit lines at the school and with the town, so to inform. So that's where we were. Did I miss anything?
There was some specific other guidance in terms of growth rates and whatnot, but you hit the core, the core essence.
Other comments? I don't know.
Yeah. I'm still wrestling with some of the details. I know, as I looked at what is presented here, that last, 2019, we had a lot of reservations about whether we were going to meet what we were expecting in excise tax revenue. And so when I look at the new proposed budget, which was included in here, this is the 221 budget, I guess, I see an increase in the excise tax. And I don't know whether that's a significant reduction from how much we forecast increased last year, or whether it's just, we just run the same amount out. So some of this is...
You use the five-year average to develop that number?
Okay, but we've seen some downward trend, right?
We have.
So, from my perspective, at that level, this, the data here isn't complete enough to really understand what's going on in some of these areas.
There are, there are a lot of areas like that when you go through all these lines. They're all subject to the world and what the IN is going to do. There's a lot of numbers here that are iffy. But this, the 4.3 is less than the 4.7, for many reasons that Mark probably went through with you. So our view is that the 4.3 probably is realistic and may, you might be able to get a little more out of there, depends what the IN and some other things happen, may not. But if you look at the cash flow, if you said you had to get all the 250 out of revenue and no spending, and you add that in, it still said, if we hit the cash flow we've hit in the past, which is about 1.1 million of cash flow per year, barring the two big years we had. So cash flow, if you remember the numbers we talked about, was about 1.1 a year, except for those two years where it was over 2, because of some large things that happened, like the Indian Hill and the special pull-in we did of receivables. It says the 1.1 will allow you, it says it could be tight, and you might not end up with any cash on the balance sheet at the end of 2021, which would affect 2022, would not affect 2021. So I don't think it will. Yeah, so it's a matter of, you're rolling the dice, because if they, if it comes up cat eyes, you're not going to, I don't see how the town is going to, other than have an issue in 2022 that says, it's not going to work again, contracts didn't come in where we want them, we're going to need to override, or we're going to have to cut. We don't need to do that now. And I have no clue of what's line by line, I just know trends in general have been 1.1. And they're all over the place. Sometimes he's better, sometimes a guess better here, better there, better weather.
You know, one or more assumptions embedded in every single, embedded in every single line in there, and they're not visible.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, he, Mark knows what he did, so he could give you every line. I mean, I went through every line, and the answer is in the end, they're all assumptions. And in general, every assumption is right and wrong. There's none, probably none, that hit that on. Some up, some down. That's just the way the world of budgeting is. And so my feeling was, and the FinCom said, well, a general budget is one you put together based on a lot of assumptions, some are going to go right or wrong, but in, and when you put them all together, what has been the past general trend? And the general trend has been 1.1, 1.10, 1.2, so generally 1.1. And so our feeling was that to be a little more aggressive on that line, should allow, not for 500,000, but for 250, and maybe get some for maybe the expenses, that you can probably get there fairly comfortably, but not, not, you might have an issue in 2022, but if we do, we're going to know why. But we're not going to walk into the year with, like, part of what Allison's comment was, which is true. You don't want to go back and say that the taxpayers that were off a half million dollars are going to do an override, and all of a sudden we have free cash that comes in like 300 more than we thought, and now all of a sudden it's like, well, here we go again. So this is a year to try to get a little more aggressive, a year to balance the budget. Again, we need help. I don't think we're going to get 500. And I think, line by line, we went through them, and his accuracy is as good as anybody else's, and they're all different.
So I think this is a year where we, we may have to get more aggressive. I guess, you know, I absolutely support, obviously, what our proposal is, but, you know, and we vigorously debate this, and we'll continue to vigorously debate this in the Finance Committee. I would say that on this point, I actually slightly differ from Bud in that, in that on this path, I actually think we're absolutely rolling the dice, and at some point, it's not going to come up, you know, with the numbers we want. It's going to happen. What I will say is that, again, I don't, I don't see how we don't get more aggressive this year and roll the dice, and if the dice don't come up the way we want, then, then we have things that we can do to mitigate that, but it will have bigger impacts next year. On the other hand, we can roll the dice, and maybe we get lucky, right? Maybe the contracts come in a little more favorable, maybe state funding does make some changes, and maybe next year, we're back here, and we're still in a good spot. You just don't know, because to your point, there are so many assumptions. But based upon historical trends, you know, it makes sense, I think, to try to make an attempt this year to push this, this issue one more year.
I agree. I think it would be really helpful if the documents, such as the one that's up on the screen right now, or there are some others in our packet, if they showed those historical trends a little bit, whether it's a five-year average, or a, you know, some, some sort of data for us to try and use. Becky?
I just want to clarify, I think you phrased it correctly, that we said, we didn't want an override, give us, give us two versions of non-override budget, basically. And they're saying no override, and they're saying it with a little bit more strength, like, we don't even want to contemplate an override. I think that in our discussion, we were acknowledging the possibility of needing an override. But we're pretty much on the same path at this point. Am I correct on that?
I think so. I mean, I don't, I did not get the impression during our discussion that there was appetite for an override among the select board. My personal feeling is kind of that, that having the carry forward budget, if you will, that doesn't start making reductions, that gives us kind of a baseline to understand when we then look at the no override alternative, but I...
But the goal, so it's maybe two different ways of getting to the same
Right.
...result, which is a budget without an override.
Yep.
Well, but...
Yeah.
If, if the school district, for whatever reasons, can't find $250,000, right? I don't want us to say, okay, there's not going to be an override, and we're going to find a half a million dollars in the town alone.
No, I stated that in the beginning. I said a no override has to have the schools share half of the...
Right, yeah. So I'm just reinforcing...
Because we can't do it ourselves.
The only thing I would point out, I can hear Marlena kind of in my head, is that if we split this difference evenly, they also will have to have a cut proportionately to Dunstable. So, you know, to me, it may be more of a 300 on the town side, 200 on the school side, so that their ultimate hit isn't disproportionately greater than ours, but... Marlena, if you want to grab the mic?
So, yeah, I was going to say that, although I think that, and I'll probably get shot when I go to my meeting on Wednesday when I say this, but our budget is larger than the town's. So proportionately, although we do have to carry that percentage worth to get to the right number for Groddon, I think, I personally believe that within the budget, within looking at reserves, it's possible. I don't think that we need an override to get past the share, and I'm hopeful for contract negotiations, not just for the schools, but for the town as well. The school committee already established our budget guidance, and within that budget guidance, and I did bring copies, which I'll hand down, basically, that budget guidance includes strict guidance in regards to FTE count. If there's, we want basically in and out, what the FTE count is, professional, non-professional. We've been providing our town with projections. Deviating from those projections, meaning exceeding those projections, has to come with some really solid, over-the-top reasons of why that would be the case. In addition, one that was the last budget guidance add-on was to provide a balanced summary and recommendations of any possible use of reserve transfers that the district has control over. And the reason for that is, and we discussed this at the tri board, or working group, or whatever we're calling ourselves there, was that E and D was depleted at one point, but we've been able to build it back. And our feasibility study has been, going to be starting to be paid back as well. So if we can possibly look at our reserve funds, and possibly, I'm not talking about utilizing it to pay off of our operating budget, so no one panic, what I'm talking about is possibly transferring funds from our E and D to our stabilization fund, so that both towns can know the money is there for our capital, so therefore, we don't need to generate as much free cash in either town to pay for those capital. So as, to basically support that discussion, where it did stem from the tri board, working group, was if we can actually prepare for our own capital, you don't need to generate as much free cash, and you can be a little bit less restrictive in that area. So that area is going to be looked at, as well as all the others, enrollment every month, every aspect. We sometimes may give the impression that the superintendent and Budget and Finance Director is not grilled to no end. I can guarantee you that as much as you hear from me on the municipal side, they hear from us on the school side. It happens. Thank you.
From my understanding, that the guidance given to me tonight is to balance the budget, no override, work with the school department, be more aggressive on revenues and expenses. Is that the guidance I'm hearing?
That was the FinCom guidance.
Does the select board support that tonight? Because I'd like to have a vote from both sides, till I'm clear.
Is there a, are we saying there's no increase in town spending?
No, what you're telling me is...
You're saying a 1%? What are we saying?
You're not giving me a percentage. You're telling me to balance the budget without an override, and work with the schools to see if we can make up a projected half a million dollar deficit.
John, what was your comment?
I was trying to understand why we say balance the budget. What are we balancing it to?
Projected revenues.
The revenue.
Okay.
This projected. And again, it's a preliminary, preliminary that, I don't, which is, this was part of the preliminary, preliminary right there. So it just simply says, revenue is X, and therefore, spending can be only Y. So when you get to the end, your mark's got the 409, 490, whatever it is. Here it is. That has to be zero. And when it comes down, those, all those lines, this is only two things, either revenue or expenses. One's got to go down, and one's got to go up, to get that to zero. And the school's got to, so the thing on the school, let's careful, we got to be careful, it's not capital that's the issue, it's the operating, it's the assessment, it's not the capital. Because we got capital, we're paying for the capital already.
We have capital covered next year.
Yeah, so we got to have the assessment go down by 250, in order to get that to zero.
Correct.
This year.
The proposed assessment.
The proposed assessment, this year, 2021, has to come down by 250, the proposed assessment, not the capital. Because the, so we're using cash to help, the capital doesn't help us this year, it's got to be the assessment.
Your, these numbers have the assumption that we need to generate free cash to fund our FY '22 capital, correct?
No. No.
When I asked you that at the tri board meeting, you said yes.
I misunderstood. These numbers is what's to balance the FY '21 budget.
Right.
Has nothing to do with the FY '22. We have FY '21 capital covered, so I may have misunderstood the year you were talking about.
So with a $491,000 deficit, we will also have no free cash for FY '22? That's what I'm asking you.
I have no idea what the free cash will be until September. You're asking, you're asking to figure out what free cash is going to be in FY '22, when we haven't even closed the FY '20 budget, to know what the free cash is going to be in FY '21?
No, what I'm asking is, do, based on the five-year projections of your revenues and your expenses, have we generated more than 1.1 or 1.2 million dollars every year for the last 10 years? Yes. So if you're using the same assumption of five-year projections, you should be generating similar amount of free cash. That's what I'm saying.
This increase of $223,520 is the largest one-year increase we've ever done. As a matter of fact, it's probably triple what we've done in the previous years in terms of increasing our estimated receipts and our budget estimates. We usually go between 70 and 100,000. So we're being very aggressive, and we still have a half a million dollar deficit, and as the Chair of the Select Board pointed out tonight, I'm not carrying a snow and ice deficit, which she thinks we need to put that number in here, because this is a change in the way we do that. This number's usually 200,000, and I understand her point tonight. That would make this deficit 691,000. She's right in what she's saying. So to try to guess what that means for free cash in FY '22, it's impossible to determine that number tonight. Impossible.
I think, so I think he needs time to put the numbers together based upon the guidance, but I think what you're hearing again is, absolutely, are we at risk next year of not having sufficient free cash? The answer is yes. It all depends upon how the economy goes, and how growth, and restaurants, and grooming board, and, and so he'll put together a forecast based upon the guidance and come back, and we'll guess how much free cash will be generated. But we are, we are getting tighter and tighter every year, and what this guidance does is basically say, get it to the hairy edge.
But to get to the 250, when we talked at the tri board, or whatever we call it, the 250 that we talked about splitting was at the operator line. I remember saying, you know, capital does not help us this year, you know, because we have the capital this year, it's a 2022 capital. We don't know whether they're going to have it or not, because if we, we change the cash flow balance by being more aggressive, and everything happens the way it hasn't in the past as far as OPEB and all that stuff, you're going to end up with basically a $400,000 cash available to charge, to pay a $400 school in 2022. So it has to be operating this year out of the 2021 budget. If it's out of capital, this thing won't work.
So the school budget has the $400,000 line contingency, which I strongly believe it needs to be there, but in a year that we're both looking at our reserve funds, and we're both looking at our revenue, we don't actually have revenues, I suppose, on the school side, but that is a line item that is adjustable. So if you already have a healthy level of free cash in being certified, which falls our, our policy, for our business policies, then that might be a way to decrease to a certain extent, and then, exactly, because that is in our operating line by two. So those, these are the discussions, like, the numbers have to be played here, the numbers have to be played.
Yeah, Mark has to talk to the school and figure out how to get the 500, and he's, he's going to figure out how he gets to 250, which is probably not going to want to do, but it works. And the other 250 is talk to you how you can drop your 250 there, then this number will work as far as balancing the budget. Then we got to worry about cash for 2022, when this goes through the year. And that's going to be, not a 2021, but we're pushing it. But again, at that point in time, we don't know how tight we really are, because we're really squeezing the potential, how we get cash out of this, the two operations. And so I think this is the year to do it, and it is risky, but I don't, like Gary said, there's, it's not so much risk that we can't handle it, and hopefully, when we get to the end, we'll say, we made it, and schools have a good contract, municipal's got maybe a good contract too, and then we'll have a different situation.
And the economy held up.
And the economy held up, yeah. There's lots of ifs.
So does the board want to vote the same guidance as the Finance Committee?
Josh?
Yeah, I move that the Select Board adopt the strategy presented by the Finance Committee for its 2021 budgeting exercise.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Josh, you said you don't, so if you want to fill us in on your thinking, that would be helpful.
Well, we already talked amongst us all, and I do understand certainly that the, when I say talked amongst us all in the last meeting, that we wanted to see two budgets. One, as you pointed out, a double service budget, and I would like to see this non-ice deficit included within that. And that gets us back to the projection of close to a $300,000 deficit that we discussed a year ago, and will be around $700,000, Mark, is that correct?
That is correct, Josh.
So with that said, I do understand the guidance that the FinCom is giving, and it has a certain amount of what ifs. If this holds up, then this works. And if revenues hold up, then this works. And if Mark's projections hold up, then this works. By laying out two budgets and giving him guidance to have a double service budget, which 2.5, basically, gets... 2.5 basic increase, and then showing what an override budget would look like, it allows us to have an easier discussion when our budget hearings come up in the future. Whereas if we do what the FinCom recommendation is, it doesn't give us an easy time. It gives us, wow, here we are, what do you want to do? And it potentially pushes the schools to cut, and it potentially pushes the municipal side to cut that we may not be prepared to make. So unless I'm wrong and somebody corrects me, I can't support what the guidance is in the FinCom.
Josh, what's the value of a level service budget? That's what we have in front of us right here. It's a preliminary, preliminary, a level service budget. What's the value of just adding $200,000 in that number? And you just said the number, 750, yeah? So what? We know it's 500 plus 250, 750. We already know that. Why would we put one, it's, that's what it is. And so why would we put another one to guess?
Because you understand it very clearly, bud, because the FinCom deals with the budget we give and go every meeting. Whereas the select board tends to track things after it's approved on a quarterly basis. And Mark has to make sure the burn rates work along with the finance team. What difference it makes is, when you explain to the general public, we might look at this once a year, it allows them to see the difference between what would be the same as it is today with a 2.5% increase and holds the schools to the increase that they're seeking. And there's a number there, which is probably a $700,000 deficit, which could trigger an override. Or here's what the cuts are in order to develop. That's the difference.
What do you mean, the cuts?
Reductions in the increase.
Reductions in the town's budget.
Well, I think, yeah.
To make up the 750,000.
Josh, I missed something. Now, the proposal we had said you, you level fund the budget and then you figure out how to get there, however you can, primarily with adding more revenue in, in order to balance the budget. Is your proposal that you put a level funded budget, the 750 issue, and then you decide how you get there to zero by cutting the budget or doing what?
That's correct.
So you want to see what you're going to cut to get 750,000 out?
Or you don't have a thing. You put 750,000 on right forward. I personally think that's a huge mistake because if you have a 750,000 override in FY '21, what do you even have 22, 23, and 24? And this gets back to the $2 million override question that I brought forward last year.
So you want to cut the budget to get there, not use revenue where you know there's some, there's some potential pickup, we could pick up there to help balance the budget because we have a lot of free cash we generate. So you're saying, don't do that, put the level funded this budget he's got here and then just cut it, make sure you get to zero by cutting $700,000 out of the budget.
I, I don't want to speak for Josh, but I mean, it sounds like he's okay with what we're suggesting as a budget, but he'd also like to see what Mark would put together as a budget without those sort of extraordinary measures.
I could do both.
That's correct.
I could do both. If that's what, if the finance committee and the select board want.
No, no, two budgets.
What's the two budgets?
The two budgets is this one here that shows a problem, and that's funding the schools at the level they need, funding me at the level I need. Here's what it is, everybody.
The no snow and ice, the no, right.
And then, okay, here is following the guidance saying, no override, work with the schools to reduce the number. I could do that.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I heard a third one he talked about.
No, no, those are the two he said.
I thought he said cutting expenses to get to zero. Did you say that, Josh?
We also talked about increasing revenue, looking for increased revenue, and that's an offset of-
No, is that what you said, Josh?
I, I think Josh is just, and I don't want to put words in.
I just want to hear Josh what he says, though. Josh, what did you say you wanted to see the cuts? Because I missed it. I want to make sure I heard it right. Did you say just what Mark said or did you say you wanted to get to zero by making cuts? What did you say?
Well, I might have said I want to get to zero by making cuts, but what I want to see in essence is what is the budget with a 2.5% projected growth, including, I believe the number from the schools was 491,000, is that correct?
No, so the, it's a different number, Josh. It's, it's in your packet that shows the increases.
I understand. I looked at it earlier, I'm not looking at it now. I was getting that there's approximately a $700,000 shortfall between revenues and what the budget would look like based on 2.5%.
All right, so, yeah, to answer your question is, the budget as projected right now today, which is two years ahead of schedule, is a 5.8% total increase in the budget, town and schools. That's the first budget. The second budget is to eliminate $500,000 to bring it down to a balanced budget without the need of an override. A 5.8% increase requires a half a million dollar override. What you want to see, what Josh is asking for is he wants to see the 5.8 budget.
Yep.
And then he wants to see a budget that eliminates the 5.8 and what that means. That's what he's talking about when he says cuts. Correct me if I'm wrong, Josh.
You're correct, but I also want to see the $200,000 out of back end.
Well, that would be part of the 5.8. As a matter of fact, that 5.8 would be higher. The deficit would be higher with a 5.8% budget if I put the snow and ice back in. I got it.
Does the snow and ice come under expenses?
No, the snow and ice comes when you put it on the recap sheet.
So it wouldn't come, it wouldn't increase the 5.8?
No, the 5.8 stays the same. It just increases deficit to 691.
Josh, what's the 2.5% you mentioned?
He's talking about purposes, two and a half.
That the select board gave to the town manager before you folks met up with, to match last year's guidance, which I think was 2.54% increase?
That's correct.
So you want to see that number just to see what it looked like? Is that why you want to look at that? Is that what it is?
Yes, sir. And I understand where you're going.
No, it's fine. That's an easy calculation.
You don't need to do, but you don't need to do-
It's a small slice, but I just want to see it, so there's options on the size of the slice.
You don't need to do a 2.54% budget. You do a 5.8% budget, which is the projection now, and it'll, it'll change, and then the budget that the finance committee wants to see working with the schools. I can do both. Will you change your motion to that? And will you guys vote that? And that's what I'll do.
Yep.
I suggest we should do that.
Are you willing to amend your motion?
I am, absolutely.
Okay. And I assume that amended motion is reseconded as well?
Yes.
Have a motion to accept those two budgets?
I move that we-
Do what he said.
That we provide the same guidance as specified by Mark.
All right. Do we have to vote? Yes, the select board, we need to vote on the motion on the table. We need to do it by roll call vote because Josh is on the phone, so Menudie and I?
Pine, I.
Riley, I.
Geiger, I.
Dig, an I.
FinCom, on favor?
Aye.
Close, here you are.
Can I ask the finance committee to stay put and the select board to indulge me to bring in some people that I want to introduce you to tonight before we get on with the rest of the meeting? They've been patiently waiting for about 20 minutes.
I guess so.
As you know, on September 16th, the town of Groton went to 24-hour shifts in the fire department. To get to those 24-hour shifts, we had to hire four new full-time firefighter EMTs for the department. Under the strong chief rules, the fire chief makes those hiring decisions and he works with human resources and he hired four really outstanding individuals. And talking to John Geiger, it probably made sense for the board to meet those four new firefighters who are protecting the town. So the chief is here, you can see these four handsome doubles sitting here in the front seat here as well, and I'd ask you, chief, to introduce them to the, to the select board.
Yeah, absolutely. I guess I didn't even like, um-
For the home audience.
Thumbs up from the corner. All right. Thank you very much. So we did hire these four gentlemen as full-time firefighters in the town of Groton. They each come with different specialties or skills that really benefit our organization and really the taxpayers of the community. So starting right to left, Chris Fisher, he was one of our call firefighters, worked per diem shifts for a few years prior to us hiring him. He's actually in the fire academy right now, so he's just finishing up. Cody McNair was an on-call firefighter in Westford and also an on-call firefighter here in Groton. Cody comes with a background kind of in vehicle maintenance, if you will, so we have certainly a need for that. Derek Maskalenko, he was an on-call firefighter in Townsend and a full-time firefighter in Maynard. So when we picked him up, he had four, correct, years of experience as well as the fire academy already under his belt, so that was certainly a good thing. Last is Wally Shaw. Wally was an on-call firefighter in Harvard, actually still is, and a full-time firefighter in Devens for six years?
Six years.
Okay, yeah, six years. So he was already experienced and trained through the Mass Firefighting Academy when we brought him onboard as well. Our shift starter, 24-hour shift started three weeks ago. It's going really well. A few of these guys will tell you they've had some very long nights, including last night. That's why Wally looks a little peaked today. But it's all going really, really well. On top of that, the on-call firefighters that we're in the process of bringing onboard will start their training this Thursday.
Very excited. Guys, thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule and coming in tonight. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
So while the finance committee's here and before we go to the rest of the agenda, I'd like, if it's okay with the board, if we go to the town managers' report.
Can we actually, Mark, open the, do we need to open the planning board?
The, there is no, there is no, the only thing I have to open, the public hearing is 7:30.
But are you going to do like, read the agenda and stuff like that? Yeah, can I do that quickly?
Fine, absolutely.
So we're a little bit late in kind of resuming our normal agenda. Typically, we will start with announcements and a review of the agenda, followed by public comment. We will then have the town managers' report, as we typically do. We will consider the appointment of Paul Martel to the Board of Registars. We will consider a one-day beer and wine license for the First Parish Church for an upcoming event on the 12th. We will review the warrant for the coming fall town meeting and get updates on some items. At 7:15, which we're already a little bit behind, we are scheduled to meet in joint session with the planning board to consider the appointment of Lorraine Black to the vacancy that they currently have. And then at 7:30, we will open and hold the public hearing for Mockingbird Hill Road layout. Under other business, we have a letter of support to consider for land acquisition by Mass Department Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. We then have our standard ongoing list of issues on which we may get updates. We'll have an opportunity for board liaison reports, and we have one set of minutes from September 23rd's regular meeting. So announcements, yep, Becky?
I just wanted to congratulate and thank the Groton Business Association for another extremely successful and enjoyable Groton Fest. I think it's an amazing and wonderful celebration of the community that we live in and what we're all about.
So I just have one reminder for the board, that we are scheduled on the 23rd for a learning coursework on evaluations. That's during the day, I think it's in the morning.
Eight, two.
Eight AM, okay?
Nine thirty.
So just a reminder, should be in everyone's calendar, but any other announcements?
I have one addition to the agenda. I'm going to ask the board tonight to create a gift fund for the council on aging. When we get to other business, I'll take that up.
Okay. Do any other members of the public have any announcements or want to make a comment? All right, not seeing any, then we will move on.
Bud, will the finance committee give us five minutes to take care of a quick planning board issue before I get to the rest of my town managers' report? I know Lorraine is here tonight, if you want to come up to the table, please. Members of the, do you need to call the planning board into session?
Call the planning board into session?
As you know, there is a vacancy on the planning board caused by the resignation of Gus Woodmire from the planning board. Following the select board policy, we advertised the vacancy in the paper. We received one applicant, Ms. Black, who's here this evening. I think we all know Lorraine. And the planning board met with her last week and they are recommending, not her appointment, but she's here tonight to, to meet with the board and answer any questions you may have. This appointment will be to next spring's annual election where this seat will become a two-year seat, and Lorraine can decide to run for it or not. It's up to her, but hopefully she will.
Good. So Lorraine, do you want to give us a 30-second update on who you are and why you're interested in the planning board and then we'll-
Sure, yes, happy to. So I've been a resident of Groton for 30 some-odd years. I've worked as a sole practitioner for 20 of those years and now work for a larger environmental engineering firm, landscape architect. I'm registered in six states. I think I bring interesting other point of view to the planning board. I've also done quite a bit of work and pro bono work and such, so it's, I'm very excited about the opportunity to be part of the planning board.
Great. Do you folks have questions?
I'll just add that all of us have seen evidence of Lorraine's talents in the planted public areas in town and many planted private areas in town that are publicly visible. And she's done, as she said, a lot of that work as a gift to the town. So I think this is wonderful that you're willing to step forward and serve in another capacity.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to add, planning board in perspective?
The planning board met with Lorraine and I think her reputation preceded her. Most of the members have knowledge of Lorraine and her, and the work she's done. I think she brings a very valuable perspective to what we do and we feel very fortunate that she's come forward to be a member of the planning board.
Greg, Josh?
I worked with Lorraine for 11 years. We were on the other side of the table, and she just does a great job. She's a good team player, she works well with everybody, and I just can't think of a better choice.
Great.
So this is a joint appointment by both boards? It has to be done by roll call regardless of Josh being on the phone, would have to be by roll call anyway, so somebody can make a motion, somebody can second it, and then it'll be a joint vote of all members present. You have a quorum here tonight, right?
Yes, we do. We have David Bonnet, Scott Wilson, and Annika Leif Nelson. Too many, too many names. So we have, we have a quorum.
Or anybody can make the motion.
So I move we appoint Lorraine Black to the vacancy on the planning board for a term to expire-
At the spring election.
At the spring election.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
By roll call, please.
Pine, I.
Riley, I.
Menudie, an I.
Geiger, I.
Burke, I.
Dig, an I. Oh, it came from there.
Snuck up on us, Josh.
Haven't seen him in a while.
Wilson, I.
Wilson, I.
And you said I, Russ, right?
I said I, yes.
Lorraine, before you assume your duties, you need to see the town clerk so that he can swear you in. And congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good.
So back to the finance committee, jumping ahead to item number four, I believe, in my, what, four in my town managers' report. So the warrant for the town meeting went to print last week. It was to be delivered to all residents on Saturday. I hope you all received it at your home? Good? Prior to the issuance of the warrant, I received a memorandum for the fire chief, which I've given you a copy of, informing us that there are 11 individuals that applied to be in the call fire department, which is the largest recruit class since 2002.[1704.66] four in my Town Managers' Report. So the warrant for the Town Meeting went to print last week. It was to be delivered to all residents on Saturday. I hope you all received it at your home? Good? Prior to the issuance of the warrant, I received a memorandum for the Fire Chief, which I've given you a copy of, informing us that there are 11 individuals that applied to be in the Call Fire Department, which is the largest recruit class since 2002. It also has the potential to cost approximately $66,000 to train and help them in this year. Since the Board wasn't scheduled to meet last week, I informed both the Select Board and the Finance Committee that I had to finalize my report to the Town Meeting, and I'd be recommending that the funding for this come from the unexpendable tax capacity. I asked the Board and the FinCom to discuss this prior to Town Meeting, which the Finance Committee did at their meeting last week, and they voted that the entire funding should come out of free cash instead of taxation. I was concerned with that recommendation because I thought it would leave free cash at a dangerously low level going into next year. So to address this, the Finance Team and I met with Bud last week to review all the proposed funding for Town Meeting, determine if there was a better way to address funding the recruit class and maintaining a better free cash balance. So I'm now recommending, after consultation with Bud and the Finance Team, that we reduce the amount of the upfront funding for the recruit class to $37,741. And if you looked at the Chief's memo, that was the basic minimum amount that he needed. The remaining amount, which is $28,000, can be addressed later in the year by either reserve fund transfer or line item transfer towards the end of the year. So in addition to that, I'm also recommending that the funding for the Assessor cyclical inspections come from taxation instead of free cash. The reason for that is the policies, the financial policies, is that if it's a recurring expense, it should be in the tax rate, which this is. So I asked the Finance Committee and the Select Board tonight to consider changing the way we fund the various items at Town Meeting as I'm proposing in this chart. I've highlighted the three areas that I'm looking for support to change the motions. My original proposal was $66,000 out of taxation for the Fire Department expenses in the recruit class. I'm recommending now that we make that $37,741 out of free cash. The capital stabilization fund was $4,845. That was to get us to the 5%. Because of interest earned in various areas, we do not need that money, so we're eliminating that. And then the Assessor cyclical inspections, instead of coming from free cash, would come from taxation. So looking at this bottom line here, the total from taxation would be $91,000 instead of $136. The total from free cash would be $841 instead of $830, and then the water revenue would stay the same. Going into the spring, that would leave a balance of $493,000 in free cash. Going into the spring, we would need to transfer out $177,000 to fund OPEB, which is part of our financial policies. $94,000 out of debt service, which is a ban as long as you can before you permanently finance it, to eliminate it, so that'd be paying down some debt. And then the department incentive pay, that's just an estimate of around $30,000 based on anticipated one-time incentive pays for our department heads. That will leave an ending free cash balance of $192,000, which I believe, Patricia, is very similar to where we ended up at the end of fiscal '19. $193, so it's almost identical. So that is my proposal to both the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and I would ask you to consider those amendments tonight so I can finalize the motions for Town Meeting. But before you do that, I would ask the Board to open a public hearing. The Select Board has scheduled a public hearing for Monday, October 7th at 7:30 PM in the Groton Town Hall Select Board's meeting room, 2nd floor, 173 Main Street. The purpose of the hearing will be to discuss laying out Mockingbird Hill Road as a public way as contained in the October 21st, 2019 Fall Town Meeting warrant. Copies of the plans are in file in the Lorraine's Department at the Town Hall. All entities applying is encouraged to attend. I'd ask the Board to open the public hearing and then vote to continue the public hearing until after the Town Managers' Report.
So moved.
Second.
Can we do them together in one?
Yeah.
So that motion has been made and seconded? We need to do a roll call. Manugie, an aye?
Geiger, aye.
Pine, aye.
Riley, aye.
Josh?
Deegan?
Thank you for that. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I would like, if the Board is willing and the Finance Committee is willing to amend this, as I'm proposing it tonight, I can get the motions ready for Town Meeting.
On the cyclical inspections?
Yes.
We already cut something out for maps?
Yes, that's just the, the maps we're doing this fiscal year, Becky. The article was amended just to do cyclical inspections, which is something that's going to happen every year, and therefore it should be. That's the number. That's the number, yes.
The number may change, but indefinitely, that depends.
So from the Finance Committee's point of view, we actually talked about the first one, the $66,000, the 37. As a matter of fact, Scott and Gary both were concerned about the ongoing. And so this would fit into what we originally talked about. So we're fine with the 37. I believe we're fine with 37.7. But we can talk to the group, but that's what we did discuss. So that would, I think it's going to be fine with us. Stabilization, that's obviously fine. The cyclical, the way, I think this was probably a misunderstanding in the FinCom, including myself, was there was two items in there. We're going to put one into free cash and let the other one roll in, and I think what happened was...
We eliminated one of them.
Yeah, right. We left the wrong one in there, free cash versus, so... Because it is an ongoing, I agree with you, it's a policy the way it should be. And the last thing is the 177 OPEB, just so you know, that was when 69, maybe they all know this, but the 169 used to be OPEB, it's now 177 because the policy says for every new hire, then you put another $4,000.
Per hire.
So this was higher than you probably last saw, but that's the policy, so just in case you picked that up. So we can take a vote on this if you'd like.
I would like...
Can I just ask one other question?
Please.
Go back up above.
Yep, just a second, Josh.
The balance of the firefighter money, we just said, well, we'll do a line item transfer or something. What was the other thing?
Or a reserve fund transfer.
Later?
Later in the year.
And that's like in May or something? And will we, does that need a Town Meeting vote, or we just do it?
If, no, either one is a vote. A reserve fund transfer is a vote of the Finance Committee. A line item transfer is a combined vote of the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Remember, last year we changed the way we do it. We don't go to Town Meeting for line item transfers anymore.
And that is based on the expectation that we will find some money to move around?
Potential, yeah.
Josh, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, I did. So Mark and I have talked about the big ask, these to fund the Call Fire Fighters. And I do applaud the Chief and all of the recruits because of Call Fire Fighters, we wouldn't be faced with this problem. So this is a good problem to have, first of all. However, I want to see the money, the FinCom, that the money comes from free cash. And I do agree with mine, we can deal with it into the spring and maybe set up a reserve fund transfer over this year for the rest of us. But concerning the cyclical inspections, what's that, $21,000 odd dollars right now?
Yes, Joshua.
Okay, so you kind of want to affect taxation of what you're proposing. I don't like messing with taxation in Fall Town Meeting. I really don't. And I don't understand why you can't take it from free cash still at this point, including your budget moving forward. They go to the $21,000 line item over whatever it is in any given year, but I can't support it coming from anywhere else from free cash. You do get precarious and close, and you run into a problem in spring. You may need to do a reserve fund transfer to cover any problem that we may encounter. So I'd like to see all of this come from free cash.
The one, the one thing I would say, Josh, is that our financial policies and the policy of the Finance Committee has always been, if it is a recurring cost, it should not come from one-time revenue sources, which free cash is considered a one-time revenue source. Since it's going to be in the operating budget from now on, it should be part of the base. And we have, in the past, adjusted line items and budgets through taxation at the Fall Town Meeting. As a matter of fact, you did it last year to support all the union contracts. So you do vote in the fall to use taxation to balance the budget. And then the reason we do that is before we set the tax rate, you want to finalize and make sure you have all your expenditures lined up. Since this is a recurring cost, I'd urge you to reconsider and allow that to come out of taxation.
Paul, pick a vote.
Thank you.
Mark, in terms of the recruit class, what are, what costs are considered one-time and which ones are ongoing?
Well, that's a good question.
I see the list in the memo, but it doesn't...
Yeah, the, the, the stuff that's subject to each year, that could be potentially changing each year. The physicals, those are high because you have 11. Next year could not be as, as, as many.
So is that a one-time? I mean, is it?
I believe it is because it's their initial physical to make the deposit. So it's one-time for each new member.
And then you have to, you have to, you know, gear them up. That's a one-time expense as well. The books, one-time expense because of the number of kids, and then the pages is a one-time expense. So the, the money that, the total of $65,000, the $37,000 is the minimum that he needs to do the physicals and, and, well, actually, it's the minimum he needs to actually give them the compliant gear. That's the $37,000 that we're asking for. The physicals and everything else, I don't know if that's going to be recurring or not because you don't know how many firefighters you're going to have in future years. All of this could be reoccurring next year if he has 11 more firefighters.
It's a one-time cost for this class.
Yes.
It's one time per person, but presumably we'll have new people flowing in at some rate here.
So you don't know. So that's why I was, I was comfortable doing the, the, the reason I pushed for taxation is I'm hoping he gets 11 new firefighters every year, and that's permanently built into his budget. That's highly unlikely, given that this is the largest class since 2002. So that's been 17 years since you've had a class this big. We usually get one or two a year that we've been able to fit into the operating budget. So I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, by the time we get to November, to May, rather, that, you know, maybe calls are down because we have the full timers and there's some leftover money and call salaries that we can transfer into the expense line out of salaries. Maybe overtime isn't as much. So there's a lot of unknowns between now and, and then. And that's why I'm comfortable with this recommendation. I hope that makes sense.
Yep, thank you. Yes, Josh?
I think the other point on the instructors is we're doing the training ourselves.
Correct.
So it's, it's offsetting whatever we would pay if we sent them all to the academy.
That's right. So we can use some of our overtime budgets to cover that cost.
There is a cost.
Yeah, it isn't free, but it's not as expensive as the alternative.
So I'd ask the Board to support that proposal as well.
So moved.
And is that, is that as a board, or is this kind of our individual opinion, like our positions on things?
Well, you've already voted to support these things, not Article 2, because this, this $66,000 is extraordinary. You've already voted to support the debt service and the accounting software presented. So I'm adding $37,741 that I, this is a change in what you originally approved. So I'm going to ask you to, to vote to authorize me to write the motion this way. And then the $21,600, you had previously voted to support it through free cash. I'm now asking you to support it through taxation. So I would like you to take two votes tonight, and that would be to authorize the free cash under Article 2 and the taxation under Article 10. That's why I'm asking you to vote tonight.
Okay. Did you move both of those?
Yeah, I can...
Let's do one at a time, though.
I'm going to. The first one is that we withdraw the plan to take $21,600 out of free cash for the Assessor cyclical inspection and instead take it out of taxation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Manugie, an aye?
Pine, aye.
No, no, this is the first one.
Riley, aye.
Geiger, aye. Josh?
This is Call Fire Fighter?
No, this is cyclical.
Cyclical.
Nay.
So that's basically four and so...
No finishing?
Four and so four.
One opposed.
Okay. FinCom on the change. Want someone to make a motion on the change from free cash to taxation?
I shall move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? I already announced me.
And now I ask, the second motion would be to transfer $37,741 out of free cash to fund the firefighter call expenses.
Do we have to acknowledge the not putting anything in stabilization?
No.
So I, I move that we take $37,741 out of taxation.
Free cash.
Free cash.
I'm sorry, out of free cash.
Rather than through tax?
As opposed to taxation. And we eliminate that 66.
Correct. Well, that, that...
I mean, it's not like a transfer. It's... $37,741 going to free cash and the rest of it...
We'll figure it out.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
We should recuse on that.
All right. Manugie, an aye?
Pine, aye.
I'll recuse myself.
Geiger, aye. Josh?
Deegan, aye. I'm going to do enough right now. Thank you.
Bye, Josh.
Do you guys have to vote on that?
Yeah. There are a motion from the FinCom to change the $37,741 from taxation to free cash. All in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I heard any names?
Thank you. I appreciate the Finance Committee sticking around. Thank you very, very much. As the Board will recall, there's a vacancy on the Board of Registars. The vacancy must be filled by a registered Republican. We advertised the vacancy, received one applicant, Paul Martel of Arrow Trail, who I believe is here tonight. Hi, Paul. Is the applicant for the vacancy. He's here tonight to, to meet the Board. So Mr. Martel, if you come up to the table, I'd appreciate it. The Town Clerk is also here tonight. He is recommending that the Board support this appointment. For the public, as you know, we have a four-member Board of Registars where you can't have more than two from any given political party. Right now, it is made up of two Democrats and one unenrolled, which is the Town Clerk. Therefore, this appointment has to be a Republican appointment. Because the Republican Town Committee did not submit a name within the 45 days of which the Town Clerk made that request, the Board advertised the vacancy for a registered Republican, and Mr. Martel is here tonight. And he's excited. You can see his face.
Complicated backstory. All right. So Mr. Martel, do you want to give us again the, kind of the 30-second, who you are and why you're interested?
Sure. I've been a resident of Groton for over 26 years. I've been a Republican for, registered Republican for more than 40, I'd rather not say how many more, but more than 40 years. I only recently became aware of the vacancy and the fact that the position had been temporarily filled in different ways. And so that's why I expressed my interest.
Very good. Any questions?
Just have one comment.
Thank you for volunteering.
Very good. All right. Does someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Mr. Martel as the vacancy on the Board of Registars. Second, what's the term?
The term, Michael, it's two years remaining in this term?
This term will run for the, until 2021. You know, for lots of reasons.
2021. Yep. So I'd ask the Board to support this through June 30, 2021.
So that has been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Nope.
Josh, she's gone, so we don't need to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Martel.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And then the last thing, before we reopen the public hearing, I'd ask the Board to consider approving a one-day beer and wine license for the First Parish Church for Liverpool Night on Saturday, October 12th, from 7 to 10.
So moved.
So again, just to kind of throw out there a plea for groups to consider these a little further in advance and give us a little more time to, to consider that. That would be great.
Yeah, I think that the problem was we didn't meet last week.
I suggested the last time this came up that, that we get a policy in place that will identify what we expect and...
We'll be discussing that on the 17th.
Exactly.
What the fee is and if you come in late, what the extra fee is and so forth.
Absolutely. All right. So we do have a motion seconded on the table to approve the one-day beer and wine license for Liverpool Night? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
I, I'd ask the Board to reopen the public hearing for the Mockingbird Hill... Why did they name it Mockingbird Hill? Well, that's a tough question.
All of the roads over there were named after bird species because of mass Audubon.
Why does it get a hill and a road?
I'm not sure. Well, it's a hill. It is a hill.
It definitely is a hill.
Perhaps mockingbirds like hills? I'm not sure.
I want to apologize to the Select Board. I had previously given you a copy of the, of the road, and when I put the packet together this week, I forgot to add the road. But you've all seen where this is, so I, I do apologize. The Planning Board voted unanimously at their meeting of September 26th to recommend that the Select Board adopt Mockingbird Hill Road. It is built to subdivision standards. The DPW Director has reviewed it, and he also is in concurrence that it's built to Planning Board subdivision standards. And if, if anything is a, is a done deal on this, when the Planning Board votes to release the bond, that's a big deal. So they voted to release the bond. So this road is built to standards. Takashi is here, Mr. Collins, who is the attorney for the developers here as well, to answer any questions from the public or the Board.
Josh?
Let me just point out that it's, it's not to... The standard here is not a development standard. It's the town standard for roads, which it will accept responsibility for care, maintenance, snow removal, and so forth. So because a development that doesn't want to have town roads doesn't have to spend near as much for the roads they're going to put in. Just want to clarify that.
Any other comments, questions? Someone want to make a motion?
Well, before you do, I should tell you a couple of things, although Mark did most of my job. I think he's trying to put me out of work, but you were trying to speed up the meeting, so I'll be very quick. I will be very quick. But just so that the Board understands, this is the fourth road in this development that Mr. Moulton completed, that it will be... that Mr. Moulton completed, that it will be up for acceptance. The previous three have already been accepted as townways. I did bring in a certification of title. There are no encumbrances on this road. I brought in a waiver of damages so that Dave can't come after the town for taking the property after it's accepted. I also brought, because there's construction ongoing in other portions, I brought in an indemnification on the part of Fox Meadow and Moulton Construction. So if Dave does any damage, he's obligated to repair it. So with that, I think you can act.
All right. Now, does someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we vote to accept Mockingbird Hill as a public way. Now, I think that still has to go to town meeting, doesn't it?
It's on the warrant. It's Article seventeen on the warrant. You're accepting the layout for it to go to town meeting.
That's correct.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. And this was record time for me. You have to.
Will the board vote to close the public hearing, please?
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's right.
I'm sorry.
We can do that.
I move that we have closed the public hearing.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Should we take the vote again so that it's?
Yeah, then voted outside the public.
Aye, aye, aye.
Yeah. Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, we're good.
All righty.
So back to, to continue on with other business. On Friday, the Council on Aging received a gift of a thousand dollars from the Groton Women's Club to establish a gift fund. The fund will be used at the discretion of the Council on Aging in consultation with the Executive Board of the Groton Women's Club, the Outreach Coordinator and COA Director. And it's going to be used to aid women in Groton that may have an unexpected emergency need. For example, a homeless woman moves to Groton with no personal belongings and such. So they've given this thousand-dollar gift. I would ask the Select Board to establish this gift fund for this purpose.
Well, and, and accept the gift?
And accept the gift. Right, yeah, well, obviously you need to accept it.
Do you have more? I move that we accept the gift.
Do we have to accept the gift?
You have to accept the gift and create the fund.
Accept the gift of a thousand dollars from the Groton Women's Club and establish a gift fund?
For this purpose.
For this purpose, but where does the Council on Aging come in?
They, they will administer the gift on your behalf.
Establish a gift fund to administer the gift, okay?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you.
Thank you.
The Groton Women's Club.
Express our gratitude, yes.
That's a great. Met your appreciated donation.
So, the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Games has considered the purchase of fifty acres off of Pepper Road, a budding Throne Hill. And they want to turn it over to the New England Forestry Foundation to issue conservation restriction on the property. It's located, it's nearly a previously sold to DFG and a lodge area protected land known as the Throne. If acquired, working through Divisional Officials in Wildlife, they'll obtain the property as open space, protect, manage the wildlife resources, and so on and so forth. You received a memorandum from, from Nick Walco, which I sent out to you this afternoon. I hope you all had a chance to read it, outlining why he thinks this is a good idea and why he would like to see the board vote to issue a letter of support. I received a phone call or an email this afternoon from the Chair asking for a map that better depicts where this property is in terms of other protected land. This is the property in question right here. The purple land on the map is Land Trust land. So you see it, but it's other Land Trust land in the area. I talked to Nick late this afternoon, and eventually they're going to try to get an easement to connect this parcel to this large parcel here, which is Land Trust. So you would have a way to get all the way across. So they're in the process of working on this easement to connect it. Further, I was asked, what is the loss of taxation on this? The FY nineteen tax bill is about ninety-six hundred dollars. So that would be lost revenue to the town. I don't know what FY twenty is because you haven't said the tax rate yet.
What's the bright green?
The bright green, I believe, is land owned by the state.
Ah, okay. So that I. Is that the Throne Hill?
Is that Throne Hill, Takashi, the big green brush?
No, it's Throne Hill. The whole area is basically Throne Hill. The pink and the purple are basically the main part of the throne hill, but all the other surrounding areas kind of are working away to Throne Hill.
So the state owns that green part?
The state owns this part here.
Does it have a name?
I don't remember.
Okay.
We will call it Steve. Connie?
Connie Sartini from the Groton Herald. My question has to do with public access to this particular parcel and to ensure that if there are trails or other items there that we guarantee that those aren't blocked at some point by new ownership.
Takashi could probably answer that, Connie?
So I don't want to speak for the potential new landowners, but New England Forestry Foundation owns other properties in Groton. And in general, they are very receptive to having trails on their lands that are open to the public. Wharton Plantation would be the best example of that. I do know that the state, the Department of Fish and Game, have a little bit different perspective on trails. Their mission is wildlife habitat protection. And so they don't necessarily see trails as being one-hundred percent compatible with that. But again, I don't want to speak for them. I just know that at Serenan Farm, the state has asked that certain trails be blocked off to allow for wildlife habitat to have priority in those areas. So I can't speak for them, but that's, those are examples of how those two agencies view trails on their lands in other parts of Groton.
Yeah, Becky?
We know that there was in this area, as you get up to the top Throne Hill, a, the habitat of the turtles. And that there's actually a fence in there to protect them from the property that is the Academy Development. So that could also be another issue that would have to get checked out.
Yeah, I am sure that the state is looking at this piece of land as another crucial piece of that bird species habitat. There are plenty of trails in the Throne Hill vicinity, so whether or not there are public trails on this particular piece of land, there are plenty of options for public trail access.
Becky? I, it's my understanding that the Fish and Game Department also allows hunting on their lands in general. Is that your understanding?
That is, yes.
So public access through, is, is allowed that way? Show hunting.
One more question. The owner of record, please?
It would be NEF.
And they would, how would the conservation restrictions then work with NEF and the Department of?
Well, once, once NEF takes ownership of the property, they put a conservation restriction on it, would take an Article ninety-seven to release it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Takashi. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you.
But the, the letter that we were sent said that the plan is that New England Forestry Foundation is going to buy it, but they are going to then.
Put a restriction on it.
Give the conservation restriction to the Department of Fish and Game? Is that correct?
That's my understanding, Becky.
I think.
The letter specifically says who will in turn sell the state the conservation restriction.
Right.
So the question to the board is, do you want to write a letter of support?
So I think that the, if I can speak here?
Yes, absolutely.
That the letter that Nick gave us makes some good points. I would certainly endorse sending a letter of support and perhaps our letter. I'm not sure who our letter is going to go to.
I'm going to send it to Divisional Officials in Wildlife, saying, we are in support of your acquisition as requested, and then they can give that letter to whoever they need to give that letter to.
Right, okay.
That's what I, that's what I thought we would do. Is that typically, yeah, that was me too.
You could send it to them and then CC and gang.
Yeah.
So perhaps our letter, I would think, should include the first, third, and fourth of Nick's bullet points. The second one, which was basically that they tried to do this last year and they missed a deadline for the land grant, which is a reimbursement thing, is maybe not so compelling. But those are the reasons, that it is on a list of first priority of land to be protected because of high.
It was nice of Nick to draft my letter for me.
Yes, high environmental value in that it's completely within priority in estimated habitats in the biomap to core habitat. And that it represents a missing link or bridge between connected properties for wildlife crossings. And I, I also have heard discussion that an easement across the one intermediate, small intermediate parcel there is quite likely to be given.
That's what Nick said to me.
So I'm struggling with this. I think at some level, we as a community need to, to figure out how long we can continue to support accruing conservation land, given that it does take it off the tax records. And while no one parcel perhaps has a huge impact cumulatively, I think we all know where we're heading. I'm struggling with this particular piece in that although it talks about creating a connection and a bridge, and I only see it touching one other piece of protected land, so I, I'm struggling, I guess. I don't know. Other thoughts?
Well, I just would point out that we're not being asked to spend any money for this acquisition. And I think some of our state tax money is going for that purpose. Somebody's phone or something.
Somebody forgot their phone here?
Anyway, some of, some of the money we pay into state taxes is going, presumably coming from the state for the purchase. And I always think that's kind of nice.
Nobody does.
All right, let's let Becky finish here.
I was just making the point that there, we are not being asked to spend any money. I think the conservation value and the trails and the public access and having it be paid for by some of our state tax money coming back to us is rather nice.
And anyone else?
Well, I, I think you have a good point. But it doesn't cause me to, to say I don't think we, we should do this one, but it, it does cause me to ask that we get this, this list of priorities updated and perhaps have them not only look at the acquisition of the land, but the impact of the loss of tax revenue so that we're looking at both those issues as we go forward.
The only piece that you see, it connects the bottom purple is what we're talking about?
Yeah, in terms of, I mean, it, it sounds like there may, at some point in the future, be an easement.
Does anybody know what that little indent is and who owns that?
It's the house, I believe.
Is it a house?
Yes. And I do know who owns it.
Okay.
So that, that.
That's nice.
Little kind of connectivity easement would be helpful perhaps for human hiking trails, but I don't know that it helps the animals any.
I think the animals will make their way as they deem appropriate.
And I, I think that.
Right, regardless of whether we conserve this or not, so.
You put a fence up.
That's true. Correct.
I think the reality is that the, the back portion of both parcels is currently undeveloped. And probably, you know, obviously if this purchase goes through, the large parcel will not be developed and the wildlife corridor is preserved. I believe I have heard also speculation about development of that property. And so there is the age-old argument that maintaining property on the tax rolls and then having it developed does, yes, bring in more taxes, and it also generally brings in more schoolchildren and requires more services.
So does someone wish to make a motion?
I move that we authorize the town manager to send a letter of support for the, for the purchase arrangement of this property that involves both the New England Forestry Foundation and the Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Is there a second?
Fish and Game.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I have one last piece of other business before I get into my ongoing issues. I'll send homework.
Yes, a lot of homework. As the board knows, you'll be meeting on October seventeenth to review all your board's policies. So in order to do that, we had town council review all the policies. And then Allison and I sat down, amended the policies based on town council's recommendations, feedback from Dawn and Melissa, and then tried to categorize them and then try to put them in some sort of, something that made sense. So based on all of that, we have put all the policies into somewhat of a final form for you to review and hopefully adopt. We put them in a new format for you. And we also came up with a way to, to number them and follow so that we have a much better process moving forward. I think it's, I think it's really good, and I think there was a lot of work involved from Allison and Dawn and Melissa for all the help we've gathered. So what I'm giving you is a memo from me explaining what we did, along with a hard copy of every single policy. There are five policies that are going to generate more discussion. And you'll see I listed them in here, is the financial policies that you need to go through because Allison had some proposed edits, designation policy, liaison policy, the Select Board operational policies and procedures, and the town manager review policy. There are all comments in here and copies of those as well. I've also given you each a thumb drive with all of the policies as well, just in case.
That's your preferred method.
So I hope giving this to you ten days and minutes of the meeting is enough time for you to go through all this so that when you come in on the seventeenth, it, it will be a much more productive meeting. But that's, there's a lot of stuff there, and I know you're all tromping a bit to go home and read it tonight. So I hope. Good luck. See you all on the seventeenth at six o'clock.
Well, I can say already, it's a huge amount of work, and thank you to those people who have done that and brought us to this place. It sounds like a huge leap forward.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's funny, when, when I first got here, Becky, eleven years ago, one of the things that we were going to do, Patrice and I, we were going to go through and do what you have in front of you tonight. And it only took us eleven years to get there, so I'm glad we're able to do that. Into the ongoing issues list, unless there's any other, other business?
Oh, I'm sorry. Liaison comes at the end, sorry.
Senior, senior center building project. Tomorrow, we're finalizing the punch list. The building is phenomenal. The Council on Aging will be moving into the building, into the center on October twenty-second. The open house is November second at one o'clock. So I hope all of you can attend that, that meeting. It's a Saturday. So we're just crossing the finish line with that project, and I couldn't be happier. Town hall renovations are done. I'm taking this off the list. We put the final coat on last weekend. You'll see that the hallways are done, the stairwells are done, kitchen is done, the assessor's office is done. So we're very excited about the way this project came out. It's, it's in great shape. One additional thing is going to be done, has nothing to do with this renovation project. It was on the schedule to be done, the staircase to be sanded down and refinished. You have beautiful floors and an ugly staircase. You will notice that that entire staircase was painted and cleaned as part of the project. So we will be doing that in the next couple of weeks. But I'm going to take this off the, the agenda.
Can I just?
I'm going to get a little, nice little signs up about you need to be invited.
They're already up.
They're already up?
They're already up, absolutely. They look good.
Most of that was paid for by insurance?
Correct. We were about nine thousand. Correct. We were about $9,000, Becky, as I told you at our last meeting, to do the kitchen and the assessors office.
Right.
Has everybody seen the final assessors office? Came out fantastic.
I have to say, I was the person who was not so happy about that.
That's right.
And I did stop in, as I saw it last week and told them, "I think this is really good. It's much better. It came out much better than I expected."
Yep. I'm glad you're happy with that, because it really did come out excellent. Prescott School Sprinkler System Project. We're out to bid. The design is done. I did not have a chance to talk to you about that, but it is done, and it's out on the streets. And hopefully, next Wednesday, we're going to receive some bids. We've sent it out to a bunch of vendors. Couple of people have called for it, and I'm hoping we get good prices on that. The CPA will have to meet after we receive those bids to determine whether or not they want to fund any shortfall in that article.
I think they're meeting that night.
Yeah, I have them on the... It's either Wednesday or Thursday they're going to meet for that purpose, to receive the bids. The Water Department, Iain and me, and these issues, I'm going to schedule another meeting between the Select Board and the Water Department to continue the discussion. There's a lot of information to cover there.
Just given the reality of the calendar, can that wait until the 28th?
I think it can. We won't receive the DEP consent audit sometime in November, so yes.
And they're not waiting for any vote from us?
Nope.
Or, and our input isn't going to change anything that's happening?
I don't think it is. I don't think it will. To be honest with you, I don't think it will. That's a good point. So we will get you back, because I know there's more information for you that you're going to want.
I think that that's a correct assessment of many... There's more information that a lot of people want about what's going on. And so I hope that delaying our meeting until the 28th does not delay releasing information to the public that they...
I don't think it will. Once DEP gives them the okay to post that stuff, they'll post it and get it out. MS4 permit, I have no updates. Green communities, I don't know. There must be something going on at the state. They had extended it to October 31st, which we were great. We were moving forward. And now they've extended the application to November 18th or 19th. I don't know why they keep extending, but we're fine. We're working.
October was, the end of October was always what they had told us, but I was surprised that they put that extension in.
They pushed it back. But we're going to be ready to go.
Okay.
We're definitely going to be ready to go. Proposed policy on major displan... I think I was supposed to take that off the list.
Well, we changed it to capital planning.
Capital planning. So I'll change that to capital planning, and we will be bringing in applicants for you to interview, hopefully, on the 28th. Charter approval. Both Mike, the board had asked the last meeting to have an update for you. Both Mike Bouchard and I have spoken directly to Representative Harrington. I received an email this afternoon that it is, House Counsel has signed off on it, and hopefully, it's going to be voted before town meeting. Representative Harrington assured me that it would be voted before town meeting. So by October 21st, we should have a charter.
Then it goes to the governor?
It's assigned.
And then it's 90 days?
No. Once the governor signs that law.
She'll buy the turkey if we don't have it by the time Thanksgiving comes?
I'll make sure of it. Route 119 crosswalk, town meeting, hopefully will vote that. Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study. I sent you all an email after my meeting last Tuesday at the state. We have hired, the state has told us who we can hire for a designer, and that is a company by the name of Studio G. I think I gave you their website, so you can look at it. The committee, the building committee is in the process of negotiating a contract with Studio G. They're meeting tomorrow night to meet Studio G and to move that project forward. But this now will start in earnest. The planning, the public input, everything will start now that we have a designer on board. Yes, Becky?
Just back to the crosswalk.
Oh, yes.
If we vote that at town meeting, can it immediately get done like before winter?
Well, I'm glad you said that, and I told you...
The answer to that is, it's very likely.
Yes, very likely, yes.
Right. I mean, we all know that we can't predict when the snow and ice will fall first.
Correct.
But assuming that we vote it, there's nothing else that has to...
No, no.
There's no time periods or anything.
Correct, correct. Library roof repair continues to go on for you. I think I sent you a little update from the... Maybe I didn't send it to you. But the asbestos was all done. Did I tell you the asbestos was all done? Did I forward that to you in email?
I didn't say it.
The asbestos is all done.
Very good.
And now they're just proceeding with the installation of the roof. There was no issue with the asbestos when that came off. Highway garage renovations. I am ecstatic with the way that this project is going. It is unbelievable. Construction Dynamics is the best contractor in 35 years of municipal experience that I've ever worked with on a municipal project. They're outstanding. Things are going really, really well. The building, if you have a chance to get down there, you'll see the storage facility is up, the frame, most of the frame is up, the trusses and everything were installed. They'll be putting the siding on that. So that project is definitely moving on target. There is one issue that has nothing to do with the contractor or the town. It's just a lead time issue. The generator is a 24-week lead time. So the project will be done before the generator is installed. We may have to install a temporary generator on the project if it's a life safety issue because it's the backup to the fire protection system. But other than that, everything seems to be going really well with that project.
Will there be a public, like, open house there?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely will be. And then I have no update on M. So that is my updates, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Very good. Any questions, folks? All right. Does anyone have any liaison reports?
I do.
Go ahead.
So we had discussed some point in the past the question of whether we should bring forward a proposal to restrict the use of polystyrene food containers. And we had sent that to the Board of Health and asked them to consider it. And they have considered it, and they're in favor. And so they and we need to figure out what's our next step. And I, Mark, I'm not really familiar enough. Is this something like a plastic bag van that would need to go to a town meeting?
Yes, yes, it would.
Well, if we're going to write a bylaw.
Correct.
Which I think we'd have to do.
And the only way to ban it is to have a bylaw. You can't just say, "Stop using it." You have to have a...
Okay. So we should put that on our radar to prepare for the spring town meeting? Or unless...
Add it to the...
Yes, list.
And John, I'm relying on you for having brought this issue to us first and had some data about why we should do this. So at some point when we get to considering that again, we gotta... And do we know if anybody else has already done it in town?
Crafton did it back in the spring.
Westford's had it for years.
Okay, so we could...
We were really, really...
We could get some sample bylaws.
So we could get some sample ones and just choose one that's already been proved?
Well, it's a good starting point.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Great. Anyone else?
The board is not meeting next week. It's Columbus Day. You are meeting on the 17th at 6:00 for your workshop on policies. Town meeting is the 21st. We will post a meeting at 6:30, just in case there's any... I don't think there's going to be any last-minute things. Oh, the Prescott Sprinkler System. That'll be something to talk about. That's it.
All right. And we have one set of minutes from September 23. Does anyone have any questions, corrections on those?
There was one thing I noticed. I'm not looking at them right this minute, but it was on the first page in the first paragraph under announcements. And after Josh gave his speech, I said something about the Interfaith Council.
Oh, yes.
Not the Interface Council, which is a totally legitimate error, because Interface is also, is an organization that we have talked about or has been talked about in town.
All right. So does someone like to make a motion to approve these as amended?
I move that we approve the September 23, 2019 minutes as amended.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. That was unanimous?
Now, we need to make sure the town...
Go ahead. That we are adjourned?
We need to make sure town meeting ends by 8:00.